Thank you and good evening. Whereas Winona Model Legislature has been teaching the workings of our state legislature and the benefits of civic involvement for 50 years, and whereas more than 5,000 high school students in southeast Minnesota have taken part in the program, inspiring some to serve in the legislature and many to serve in leadership roles in our region. And whereas state representative Gene Palowski has led the program for nearly 40 years to share his passion for government service, leadership, and education. And whereas representative Palowski has brought some of Minnesota's top elected officials to Winona to participate in Model Legislature over the years, and whereas Winona State University has hosted the program for 38 years, and Winona Senior High School has printed the 500-page book. And whereas more than 200 Winona State University students have participated in this program, developed a website to assist the participants, and whereas St. Mary's University students will also participate in Model Legislature this year. And whereas Model Legislature is supported by the generous contributions of many civic-minded citizens of the Winona area, now therefore I, Jerry Miller, proclaim November 15th, 2012, as Model Legislature Day in the city of Winona, Minnesota. Whereas Gene Lee became a master gardener 25 years ago, as one of the first two in Winona County, and is a longtime member of the Winona Garden Club. And whereas Gene Lee is an experienced gardener who shares his experience, his expertise with other gardeners at home shows, flower shows, gardener's days, garden tours, and the Winona County Fair. And whereas Gene Lee has had major responsibility for ordering plants, trees, planting, and maintaining various gardens and parks in Winona: Lake Park Flower Garden, Bike Path Daffodils, Amtrak Depot Garden, and likely more. And whereas Gene Lee keeps current in gardening trends by attending gardener's days, researching in his extensive library, attending local meetings, and experimenting in his own garden. And whereas Winona County Master Gardeners, garden club members, and citizens have more beautiful productive gardens thanks to knowing, learning from, and working with Gene Lee. Now therefore I, Mayor Jerry Miller, do hereby call upon all the citizens of the city of Winona to recognize November 20th, 2012, as Gene Lee Day in the city of Winona, Minnesota. And I want to present this to Nancy Reynolds and Stuart Shaw. Do you want to come up and say a few words, the R.G.S.? Do you want to say a few words about Gene?
I've known Gene since I've been in Master Gardeners, and I've only been a master gardener since 2005, but my experience with Gene is that he's always there, ready to answer questions for anyone, and he loves to share his garden with people and try new things there. And if any of you have ever had a chance to go on garden tours when his garden was on, you really got a treat when you got to his yard with the water features and the different flowers that he would bring in that would be different than other people would have in Winona.
Stuart? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for honoring Gene in this way. He truly is a one-of-a-kind citizen of the city of Winona who has contributed a lot of things to his passion, which is gardening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all for everything that you all do. I've got one more thing. I just want to publicly thank John Paulson and all the people who participated in his big band presentation last Saturday for a very entertaining evening. It was, these people got together about three hours before the show and put on one heck of a deal, so I want to thank them. Judy?
No report here.
Okay, Monica, call the roll, please.
Mayor Miller?
Here.
Councilman Thurlie?
Here.
Craig?
Here.
Alexander?
Here.
Porchakowski?
Here.
White?
Here.
The first item?
Let's go to, let's take here 4-1 first, okay?
Okay. We'll go to unfinished business.
Pam? We'll wait till we pass it, right?
Item 4.1 is to consider the appointment to the city council for the vacant third ward seat. The council adopted a resolution at the last meeting stating that they intend to appoint the person officially elected to this seat on November 6th, and that is Pamela Iden.
I'll move to approve the attached resolution.
Move by Debbie, is there a second by Michelle? Questions or comments? All who give the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carry on. All right, Pam, come on up, then you'll get sworn in.
I'll do it.
Right? Get sworn in.
Yep. I'll come to this microphone. I, Pamela Iden.
I, Pamela Iden.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully.
And to discharge faithfully.
The duties of a member.
The duties of a member.
Of the city council of the city of Winona.
Of the city council of the city of Winona.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
During my continuance in office.
During my continuance in office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Here's your seat, right over here, I think, right? Okay.
Okay. Now we will go back to item 3.1. I'll let Pam get her agenda out. And this is a request from the Winona Steamboat Days Festival, and President Chris Drube is here to answer any questions you have.
Okay, Chris.
Good evening. I'm the 2012-2013 Steamboat Days president. Here to propose the relocation of the beer garden to the parking lot of Second and Center Street. It would provide space for a bigger tent, so that we can actually get the band underneath the tent. We've been plagued with bad weather over Steamboat Days the last three years and have not made money with Steamboat Days the last three years as well. So weather has plagued us with, you know, bands not being able to play the whole night and along those lines. You know, there's a few other points that we have that Fred's got, so if there's any other questions or concerns. The lighting's better down there and on that there because there is parking lot lights. The levee doesn't have very flat space. There's a lot of bushes, there's a lot of places to hide. There's really, security-wise, it would benefit us more to look at putting it down there. And then it would bring it more to the festival, too, more closer to the carnival rides, the food vendors, to generate more money as well. You know, I'd like to say that we have some volunteers here from Steamboat Days Committee, and that's all it is, it's volunteers. We don't get paid to do this. We volunteer our time, and all the committee members, all they want to see is the success of the Steamboat Days and to continue to operate with a profit and continue to provide festival and activities for the city of Winona.
Okay, let's see if there's a motion first. If there's a motion, then we can ask questions. Okay, move by someone, okay, Debbie move, Michelle second. Okay, now questions.
Chris, thank you. Just a couple of questions. If this passes, I support it. Two questions. So who would be responsible for the cost, like you said, such as relocating the electrical service?
Steamboat Days would.
The committee would? Okay. And to vacate that space that you normally, you have been using for years, do you have plans for that to be used for anything, or they'll just fill it in with parking? I remember it's...
Yeah, I believe now that the plans are just for parking during the festival, so we can add more parking space.
It would open up 87 spots down there, if parks wouldn't use it.
Fred, give us your name.
I'm Fred Bennie.
Okay.
And Chris presented here, but I think it was 12 years ago, I got a call from Mr. Miller, Mayor, that Steamboat Days was in big trouble and the DCs were going to drop it, and they asked me to get a committee together, which I called Andrew Beck, and Mr. Beck and I put a committee together to continue Steamboat Days, and we're at a point now where we feel that we have to put some things together here and move it. Now, one of the big reasons we want to move it is, like Chris had mentioned, we had several losses the last few years in five figures, that because a band could not continue, we didn't have protection. The tent that we're proposing is identical to the La Crescent Apple Festival tent, it's a hired tent. We're able to get a stage underneath it, and that way we would be safe from weather, whereas before we had to cancel a certain night or whatever, and it cost us a lot of money. I mean, in terms of button sales, token sales, and what have you for revenue, and that's why we've been kind of on the borderline the last few years. So we give the stage under the tent, we have better lighting, because that parking lot is well lit, security. I've already talked to the police department, and they're on board with it, with a few changes, and we've already made them. Talked to the fire department, they've been down there to look at it, they've made some changes. We've incorporated them in the maps that you should have as council people, our council members here tonight. There'll be one entrance, it'll be easier to check people in and out. We're not going to have two separate entrances. Entrance will be right on Second Street. We are blocking off Second Street from Lafayette to Main. We are allowing access to Windhaven, to the office building there on Second and Center, but we are blocking it off for security reasons, because Second Street's been a hazard, all these people have been walking back and forth across Second Street, so we're blocking it to protect the people that go back and forth. The visibility, question?
I wanted to finish up.
Are you done? Are you done?
I wanted to finish.
Well, I wanted to just add a few things, and then open it up for questions, whatever you want to do here. The big thing was knowing, I'll just make this the last thing, I've been to all the people down there on Second Street, the big thing was Windhaven. I went to see her, the manager, she said the people there will be elated to have Steamboat Days right there. She said last year the people bring their lawn chairs out, sit in the parking lot, listen to the music. She says she'd be happy to have a week off from the traffic on Second Street, so go ahead and open it up.
Okay.
I was, I was, I was on a roll here for a bit, but thank you, the information was wonderful. And while that does, I do want to make sure to say that, I mean, the committee does an incredible job, and on staff, mayor and folks, all these years, absolutely incredible. Just my own curiosity, so that would open up 87 parking spaces, you know, right down there at the levee, and how many parking spaces will this move take up?
Just a few from Second Street.
In the parking lot?
The parking lot, we already use it.
That's right, that's true, okay.
So we're just taking the ones on Second Street, there's probably like eight of them.
Okay, all right, good, thank you.
Okay, Michelle?
My question just was going to read regarding residential, because you did talk to Windhaven, but that lot is surrounded by residential, some, you know, full-time residents that live and work downtown, and I just want to make sure that we take that into consideration when we choose this spot.
And I've talked to some of them already, like Eddie Erbeck, and his apartment's there, that's fine. Mr. Murphy's got apartments on Second, or Third and Center. There's a few others, but there's not that many on the Third Street side. I've talked to Stacy Mounds, that's not a problem. I've pretty much talked to everyone.
Well, on paper, it looks better to me. I mean, for, instead of being all the way over by itself, kind of in the corner.
It's more central.
Yeah. And I like the idea of blocking the street because of the people walking.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, and the committee for doing an excellent job in our community celebration. My question, where, that was where the kiddie rides were previously, at that parking lot, where is that going to go?
We are going to take the others that were on Second, down to the levee, out of there, giving them that for kiddie land, plus they're going back on Main, where they were a few years back, all the way up to Second from the levee. So that would be kiddie land, too. We used to have Amerco on the Chamber Parking Lot, if you remember that, that would probably be back there, too. So we're trying to position ourselves this year, get the bugs out before 2014, when we have another major, major change coming. So we want to make sure the beer tent is positioned for this, and so we can make this change.
Now, Second Street, where does the traffic that uses Second Street, and I think there's some truck traffic that goes down that road, where is that going to be rerouted?
If you're looking at the map, it shows the truck routes on there, Al. And we talked to the police, and they're okay with sending the truck traffic to Franklin, going up to Fourth, turning right on Fourth, that's a truck route. Fourth Street's a truck route. So we're bypassing Second by, we're not adding anything to truck routes, we're just signing that truck route, just makes a turn there on Franklin and Second, goes up to Fourth, and then Fourth, wherever they want to go.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor of the motion, which is to approve the request for the Winona Steamboat Days Festival? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Next item, item 3.2 is the ordinance to amend the temporary liquor license provisions. And I would point out, the state statute permits cities to issue temporary on-sale, intoxicating liquor licenses, which would provide for on-sale, the strong beer, wine, and liquor. However, Winona City Code currently restricts our temporary licenses to only 3-2 malt liquor. So we have prepared a draft ordinance, which would permit the issuance of temporary on-sale for wine and strong beer. We are not including strong liquor at this, in this draft ordinance. But the benefits would be to allow nonprofit groups to sell a larger variety of beer, as well as selling wine at their events.
I would move to introduce the attached ordinance.
Okay, move by George.
I'll second.
Second by Michelle. Questions? Debbie?
Question, Monica, what was, do you recall the reasoning behind this restriction in city code for nonprofits?
Mayor and council, I don't know. That ordinance has been in place for many, many years.
I would think that the opposition probably comes from the private sector, people who are in the business that sell the same stuff, so. Another example of, you know, a lot of nonprofits in some ways competing with the private sector, so I would think that's probably where the opposition comes from. I don't know if there's anyone here that would want to speak, but that's what I would think. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, which is to amend the license so that strong beer and wine can be served under a temporary license. Is that it? If you're all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
If it was opposed, I'll oppose it, just to oppose it.
Item 3.3 is caroling by candlelight requests at Wyndham Park on Friday, December 7th.
Move to approve that request.
Move by Al, second by George, or Michelle. George, all right. Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve caroling by candlelight requests? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If it was opposed, I'll oppose it, just to oppose it.
Item 3.3 is caroling by candlelight requests at Wyndham Park on Friday, December 7th.
Move to approve that request.
Move by Al, second by George, or Michelle. George, all right. Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve caroling by candlelight requests? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If it was opposed, carry on.
Item 3.4 is reappointment to the planning commission of Laverne Olson.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Jerry, second by Michelle. Questions or comments? Laverne has been on there for a long time, and it was kind of a sentimental appointment for me. All in favor of that appointment, say aye.
Aye.
If it was opposed. By the way, I might say, I think we still have one, or do we have two left?
There's one opening on the planning commission.
One or two, I thought there was two.
You have the list here somewhere.
Okay, well, anyway, there's at least one, and I'll be appointing that probably beginning of next one. Okay.
Item 3.5 is a request for handicap stall on Lafayette Street in front of the home at 465 Lafayette. Move to approve that request.
Move by Michelle, second by Pam. Questions, comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the request for the handicap stall on Lafayette. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If it was opposed, carry on.
Item 3.6 is the update on the boat sign rehab at Huff and Highway 61.
Who's, who wants to?
Do you want me to start? You start. Go ahead.
Mark, you want to give us something?
This is a relatively, I think, simple matter, but in mid-2011, council mayor remembered that a committee was appointed to look at what to do with the boat sign that exists at Highway 61 and Huff Street. Those appointed to that committee were Debbie White, Jeanne McCormick, Claudia Johnson, John Frant Enstrom, Phil Feith, Steve Bechler, representing visit Winona, Arlene Prozen, and Mark Peterson. During the committee's first meeting, what it did was to decide whether or not to rehab the boat, that was, or the structure that was there, to replace it with an existing structure, or to, there's a third option, looking at that intersection more broadly, and trying to define whether or not a simple boat structure is all we need there, or should we look at a bigger picture, bigger vision. The committee, following consideration of these, decided to go with option one, which was simply to update the current structure. A budget of $5,000 was established. A press release was issued in September of last year, seeking funds for the project. Since that time, the group has received about $3,100 in funding. We've spent about $2,000, and part of that $2,000 has been used to hire some professional help. For example, Wes Hamilton was hired to do some structural improvements to the boat, including replacing the paddle. Taff Roberts volunteered his time for painting, and Don Dennis painted new signs for the structure. Since that time, the boat has been repainted, new signs have been placed on it, and in October 4th, on October 4th of this year, the committee held a kind of a wrap-up meeting to look at what needs to be done yet. And at that time, there were a couple of projects that need to be completed. The first was landscaping around the base of the boat. What we're suggesting at this point is simply allowing the wetland vegetation that exists in that area to allow it to grow underneath the boat, rather than planting something formal there. Personally, I've seen what happens when we try to formalize an area with landscaping. All the intentions are great, but over time, they get, it gets lost, and starts to look worse than it would if we just allowed that vegetation to grow underneath the boat. So that's kind of what we're looking at there. The group was also presented with a proposal from Jerome Kulis, a local citizen, to construct the infrastructure needed to make the paddle move, and to light the structure. He's volunteered his time to put the project together, and is working with his former employee in terms of them financing the things that need to be done. The city would have to construct the electricity up to the sign, or reconstruct it. There was at one point electricity to the, to the structure, but the meter for it has been removed, and we would need to reestablish that at a cost right now between $1,000 and $1,500. We're still looking at that at this point, so it's kind of a final thing that needs to be done there, but once that project is completed, we view the project as complete, and not asking for any action by council tonight. Councilman White was involved in the committee, if she has anything to add, she can do so, but our purpose is only to bring this, bring you an update of the project.
Okay, Debbie, you want to hand to that?
First, I'd like to thank everyone, and Mark and staff, and the committee members. I think they did an incredible job, and they saw volunteer time and solicited donations to help us do this. I know I had, I had originally brought this initiative forward months back, I wanted to push to get some movement to update this fix-it repair, if something needed to be done. I think a lot of us can agree, it was kind of long overdue. So I'm very pleased if you haven't been by there, see the changes that have happened, all with volunteer time and effort. With the Jerome Kulis, you know, getting the paddle to move, I know, I think Mark touched on the motor, rotor chain, and some of those other mechanical pieces of that, is also being donated by malt Europe, is donating that to get that paddle to move, and of course Jerome Kulis is donating his time to get that piece going. But that said, a lot of folks did help, I don't want to be remiss in not mentioning everybody's name for that. So it's a good project, looks really nice. We start to do some wavefinding and signage, and get that kind of solidified and grounded as well, so thank everybody for that.
Okay, let's move on.
Under new business, item 5.1 is to set the sale for the city refunding bond.
Mary, you want to address this, please?
Mayor and council, this is an item to refund one water revenue bond with another water revenue bond, and it's to save interest expense. The estimate is approximately $100,000. The two bonds would be on the city books until a so-called crossover date, which would be February 1st of 2014. So that's the only thing you have to know, that both, both of the bonds really show up on the city books. One is held in an escrow, and the other is one that we're actually continuing to pay on. And this bond, this refunding bond would be considered a 2013 bond issue, but overall, it's estimated to save the water fund approximately $100,000.
Mary, was this bond for when we did the upgrade down at the source?
This is for some improvements in 2003.
Right, at the water?
At the water treatment plant.
Thank you.
I'll move to approve the attachments.
You moved by Debbie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle. Questions?
Quick question, Mary, is the refunding from the rent interest rate declined?
Pardon me?
Is the refunded amount, or the savings to the city due to a lower interest rate?
Right, and I have in here the estimated different rates here. The, the current bond issue is at, for the remaining years, is at a 4.04 percent, and then the new bond, they're estimating in the same remaining years of a .74 percent. So it's that difference that is to produce the interest savings.
That'll be a savings for the water department.
For the water fund.
Questions or comments?
Very good.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, which is to set the sale for the city refunding bond. Thank you, Mary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 5.2 is a phased retirement option.
Judy?
Mayor and council, this is a request to allow us to consider the option of allowing people to leave retirement, or leave our employment on a, through retirement, and not take a hit on their retirement funds, but allow them to work on a part-time basis for up to a year, at a time for not more than five years. We don't anticipate that this would be used by a number of employees, but it might be, might be an option for some who are close to retirement, who maybe are training people to take their position, or we're looking at some other options for their position, and give them the option of being able to collect their retirement, take no reduction in it, and yet continue to work on a part-time basis, so that we don't lose that institutional knowledge immediately.
What would the effect be on the healthcare that?
Well, they would essentially retire, and they would be taking care of their healthcare in another, in another way.
So it wouldn't be the city's responsibility?
It would not be the city's responsibility. They would not qualify for healthcare coverage under the part-time employment basis, anyway. But it allows them to continue to collect their benefits, and yet work on a part-time basis for us. Whether or not anybody would be interested, I guess we don't know, but we'd like to be able to operate, or at least offer the option. The program is currently only authorized by the state legislature until June 30th of 2014, so it's not something that's, would be out there for a long time at this point. And I don't think there are a lot of people... And I don't think there are a lot of people who would want it, but I think there are some that it might work very well for.
How, how does this fit into our bargaining units? How does that impact that, those discussions, the union contracts?
I guess maybe our attorney can better answer that question.
Mayor and council, for those employees that would be eligible for this, whom the city, in this case, the city manager would select to be, to participate in a phased retirement option program, we would do a phased retirement option position, which would be essentially a new part-time position. We would need a memorandum of understanding with the respective union to which that employee would be belong. So in order to do it, we would need an MOU with the union.
Okay, you think that's something that most bargaining units, I mean, you can't speak for them, obviously, but it would help their members, you know, in their positions, obviously.
I've done this a couple times in a few other cities. This program has not been utilized that much, but my experience has been that this has not been an issue for the bargaining units, because this is a voluntary program, so the employee is actually the one that is pursuing it as well.
And as, as our manager said, we gain the knowledge and wisdom of that particular individual over the years as they train their, their replacement essentially, and we don't lose it.
Jerry?
Yeah, but wouldn't we, by case by case, have to approve an additional person? Somebody chooses to retire but still work part-time, we have to fill that position, so it's still an additional employee. Either the new one or the old one is an additional person.
Well, council member, it may be such that the savings are enough that we can cover it under the current budget options. Just because the new person coming in would not be taking the same salary as the new person.
Yeah, but right now...
Or the new person coming in wouldn't have the same salary as the past person.
But that is oftentimes when we do it, isn't that the benefit? We know we're losing institutional knowledge.
Yes.
But we also know that we save a few dollars on somebody newer, and that oftentimes doesn't happen as well, because the way compression is, new people end up not being paid as, so I, I see the merit, but at this point, I don't...
And, and there may not be anybody who's interested in participating, because it really comes as an option for the employee to approach us.
And how did this come up?
Because there has been some talk that, that there may be some, some individuals who would be interested in it. It might be the, it might be a situation where we end up closing a position when this is, when this, after this happens. So it might be someone training a person to take their position on a part-time basis, and we end up maybe the, the position that that person's leaving, we don't fill. So there are some options for, for some potential savings in the long term.
Hypothetical, we go ahead and do this. Physician A, or Person A decides to retire but wants to use this. Council at that time, future council says, we're not going to support it. We support this, but we don't support bringing on an additional person. Is that employee, the retiring person harmed? Because tonight we vote for this, but then in the future, we're looking at an additional person.
I guess we'd have to look, look at the individual situations and, and see how that would work, and whether or not we're actually adding a position, or if we're just giving time for that person to move to the new position, and then their position would be gone, because that could be an option. And in fact, I see that. It also may be that the person who's leaving could be training an additional number of people within their, that department or their division to take over their responsibilities, not, not requiring us to replace them.
I, I...
And that's why it needs to be looked at on an individual basis, and we're requesting that the city manager make that decision, not the employee.
You know, I, I think I see where there might be a request, but there might not be acceptance of that request. I, I would think there's a lot of questions. I would suggest that we table this, and maybe let everybody get a chance to digest it, and then come back and see if questions that are concerns that people have can be answered.
Well, we're talking, just, and here you said, Judy, the offer of phased retirement can only be done for one year at a time, but may be renewed annually, not to exceed five years.
That's what state legislation currently allows, yes.
And that means as, if we, if this was ever approved, that it's good for one year, it's got to come back to council. Is that my understanding?
It would have to come back to be approved by, the request here would be through the city manager.
After a year.
After a year.
See, I, I think, I think maybe the intent is good, but I, I still, I feel some questions that have to be answered, and maybe there's something that the city could, maybe there's some amendments to this that you could make that would tighten up the con, you know, I see where jury is coming from. If there's a, you know, there's, well, we've had it before where we haven't hired anybody, where there was, you know, where the council voted, no, you know, we're not going to replace and this and that. So I, I think, I would suggest that, yeah, we take some time on this.
Well, I'm going to try this. I, I, before we do a table, I'm going to move that we deny it.
Okay, there's a motion to deny. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, that motion fails.
I move that we table it.
Second.
Move to table and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Aye.
One opposed.
Next, excuse me. Next item, five point three, is the renewal of the transit service agreement with the City of Goodview.
Move by Al.
Second.
Second by Michelle. Questions? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the renewal of a transit service agreement with the City of Goodview. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Item five point four is the Wall Street railroad crossing improvements. Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Debbie, seconded by George. Questions or comments? George, you want to, you know, I know there's a lot of, this, this got a lot of goodwill down on the east end there.
Yes, yes, very good, very good. And just say the, the two to go, and one thing we can be proud of is the east end of Winona, we have our own Wall Street.
But I, I want to compliment the railroad too, because I, I think this was supposed to be a three-year project, and I think they got it done basically in two years. There's a little bit left on Jefferson, maybe, and I don't know if that was part of the deal or not. I know there's a lot of truck traffic down there.
This was, it was talked about to be a three-year project, and it is going to turn out to be a three-year project, but this year, they tied up a lot of loose ends. In the last winter, we had a lot of gravel open. This year, they've tied that all up, so that won't happen again. And now they'll be doing the last two intersections, which will be second and third, with the city paying for the rubber crossings and the asphalt, and the railroad paying for all the rest of it.
But they've done a good job.
Now, I think one thing too, Keith, is once they are done, of course, they're going to be out of, off of Wall Street. Well, third they will be, but second they'll be off to take a whole general look at that Wall Street from Third all the way down to Ninth. I know that, say, it's getting, it's getting beat up from, you know, from the, all the equipment that they had on there, so, I mean, it may need a light overlay. They say sometimes there's never been an overlay on some blocks of it. You know, I don't really know, but take a good look at it, so.
You've been pointing out the little potholes or the equipment returning and such.
Right, right.
So you're right.
Okay, there's a motion to sign the letter of agreement. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Item seven point one is council concerns.
Okay, we'll start with George.
Okay. Talking with a gentleman yesterday morning, and, and I asked, in fact, it's a coworker of mine, and he said, you know, George, he says, is, do you have anybody out there that doesn't like you? He said, you know, he said, I, he said, I have a couple of people that don't like me. I says, Kevin, I have over 6,000 people that don't like me. So anyway, as that, as that leads me into this here, yeah, Peerless has a phased retirement too that I probably could have used. It would have been out the door and don't come back, so, but anyway, I'm still here, I guess, so. Tonight, on a serious matter, just like to thank all the people that have supported me and voted for me during the past election. I will continue to represent you at the highest level of my ability. And also, for the folks that did not support or vote for me, I simply want to let you know I'm still going to be here. You can call on me anytime, and I will help you out with any matter that you may have, so, and thank you very much for all that. And to clear up some confusion that kind of came up during the campaign, and I'm surprised the newspaper didn't know any better, it's been out there about the mayor does not vote. The mayor does not vote. The mayor only votes when there's a tie. Well, on our council, the mayor is a full-time voting member. Our votes are 7-0-6-1-5-2-4-3. Our mayor does vote. And you would think the newspaper, with their knowledgeable editors, and they've been covering these meetings, not you, Mary, but, you know, that they would, you would have enough sense to say, the mayor is a voting member. He only votes when it's a tie. It's very, very embarrassing, I think, on their part, so. And outside of that, have a happy Thanksgiving, and see everybody in December.
Okay, Pam?
Well, I'm, I'm delighted to be here, and I have no further comment at this time, but happy Thanksgiving indeed.
Okay, thank you. Debbie?
Thank you. First, I have to say, we have new chairs. Thank you, thank you to the city manager, and then I, I only have two more meetings after this, but thank you. It's awesome. I don't feel like the table's up to my chin all the time. They used to tease me, they'd get me like the Chicago or New York City phone book to sit on, because the chair's been removed. So I'm always looking for the tallest chair. Thank you for that. Also, yeah, on that note, I have to say council member Borzakowski, also the mayor can make a, cannot make a motion, or a second as well, but they can vote, just to clear that up. I, I have to say thank you to staff, finally. I've been on, on staff and mentioning several times over the past several months about the, the east entrance sign to Winona doesn't have lights, hasn't had lights for years. Has anybody noticed? Yes, great, terrific, it has lights, it's so great. When we change the clocks, that particular, you know, this one is coming into town, and I believe the west end sign, entrance sign also has something that looks a lot more aesthetically pleasing, they're smaller, more efficient otherwise. So thank you, staff, for that. That looks really great. Now, we're working on the vegetation around there that I've been proposing for a long time, and we're working on that as well. Just want to mention a few more things. When we talk about, I've heard over in the paper lately, and stuff from candidates and whatnot, that the local option sales tax, I mean, I know staff has always, that's always on their plate, that's always there, things to look at, talk about, and when in the legislature and whatnot. So it's nothing that's new. And even most recently now, I know staff has had conversations, city manager, about potentially looking at that, again, has to be an election year, it's a referendum from the community, but for example, the Luisa overpass street. So that's always staff is looking at. The last time we had a referendum, I was asking the city manager, I think it was roughly, what, five, six years ago, we had a, a long list of things, and they did not pass. But once we do get one, it has to go to the state legislature to give us the okay to do that, to bring to the public. So we always use, that's one of the tools that we use to see where we can do improvements on a, a variety of things that we are looking at. Keith, it may be a minor thing, I kept forgetting to ask you, but it, I don't know if it's something that a city's purview, or it's just a private owner. When I'm going down to go to workout, and I'm going south of Mankato, take a left in Frontenac, you know, Ace Storage there, I really noticed a few weeks ago, because it was, you know, it's dark in the morning already, they have a, I think it's a new light that lights up their sign, but it really hits the driver, I think, right, and the eyes, the angle and/or the brightness, or how big it is for that little sign. And I don't know if that's our purview, or it's private or something. You can let me know, because I think it's rather distracting, kind of hits you pretty much there. Speaking of the railroad, I had experienced a few weeks ago, waiting for a train, it was 30 minutes at the crossing, it's 10 after 5, the busiest time of the day. And a few days, Judy knew that, because I called her up irate in the car. It's a goodness. But of course, then the next day, the same thing happens, it's like 20, 20 minutes. So, and I know staff is on CP rail, because we're talking about rail and whatnot, but it is, for our knowledge, city code, length of time. The train can stop on the track to couple or operate cars is 10 minutes. So I want citizens to know that. So they've been pushing it, and especially at the busiest time of the day, you know, emergencies, everything, everything, it's, it's not good. The last thing, in the last council meeting, I, I brought up again, reminded folks about that wonderful document we have, the comprehensive plan that we redid August 2007, and mentioned things we're talking about, has a whole separate section just for the levy, has a whole separate section just for downtown, besides overall for the city. One thing I would like staff to visit, revisit, and I know we go back and look at this now and then, because that is our record, our direction for short, midterm, and long-term goals that we're looking at. It's a dynamic living document that we look at for the city, is the special service district areas. Yes, for downtown, right, for downtown. Another way of possibly looking at, they're actually considered like special taxing districts by ordinance to pass costs, for example, streets, landscaping, water lines, sewer lines, within that special service district. That is in our comprehensive plan in the downtown section as well, to look at that. I did pull the latest information from the Minnesota House Research Department. The latest update is January 2011, because it is by state statute, and right now, it looks like there's approximately 15 cities as examples in the state of Minnesota that have used that and do use it for various different services provided. I think staff could, if you wouldn't mind, looking at that as well. I mean, anywhere from Minneapolis down to New Ulm, Bloomington, Crookston, Worthington, all over. So I think it's something worth revisiting, while we're talking about revitalizing and getting some other areas revitalization for downtown. As well, we've talked about from the comp plan, you know, membership-driven as well types of issues, and as I'd mentioned before, what LaCross had also done, but theirs was a 501(c)(6), you know, their downtown group, and getting fundings, not just the city, it has to be public and private as well for those things. And happy Thanksgiving, everyone, safe and happy Thanksgiving. It's going to be warm here, so it'll be awesome. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, if you want to thank anybody for the chairs, thank the taxpayer.
Yes, well, yes. The initiative that they got.
And number two, use Franklin Street. You don't have, you don't have to use Mankato. Franklin Street's got the lights now, it's very easy. There's very seldom switching there, and you can cruise right through. Michelle?
I don't really have concerns, but I'd just like to welcome Pamela to the council, and wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and remind you that Christmas is coming, so Messiah singing is going to be December 1st at 7:00 PM at WSU. Mary will be singing, so come on out, sing in with us.
Okay, Jerry?
Pam, welcome aboard, and happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Al?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the voters who supported my campaign this past November, and thanks to all who were involved in the local elections. I think it was outstanding in terms of involvement, in terms of people who got out and, and made their choices in the local campaign, so thanks again. And welcome to Ms. Idan for her chair, and a future welcome coming up to Mark Peterson, Paul Double in January. One issue I've noticed with our warm weather, and, and this is a more of a human kind of decision, that, you know, there's recently, and the city has taken steps to improve the bike safety and the bike lanes throughout our town, and with the warm weather, that's being used quite a bit. I've noticed a lot more cyclists out there. But I, I would like to remind them, and I'm very concerned about a safety issue for cyclists that I've observed quite a bit, that they are required, like a vehicle, to stop at stop signs. And I really, in the last week I've been thinking about this, I've yet to see a cyclist, when the traffic was not preventing them from going across the road, to actually simply stop because they're required to stop, like any motor vehicle would. And I would offer a suggestion, ask staff perhaps to come back with some suggestions on how we can improve that kind of issue and the observation of those stop signs, so I appreciate that. And a happy Thanksgiving to all, and safe travels to everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Under the consent agenda, there are three items. Approval of the minutes from November 5th and 8th, the final adoption of an ordinance to zone the Pinecrest properties, and the final adoption of an ordinance to modify parking near the Winona Public Library.
Who's to approve the consent agenda?
Moved by George, seconded by Pam. Moved by George, second by Pam. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Mr. Mayor, I move, we adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Jerry, second by Debbie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much. What was that concert you were talking about?